Um, I'd like to welcome everybody here to this evening's town board meeting of October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We're going to begin this, this evening in memory of Jason Beckman. Um, Jason was an Amherst Middle School, uh, physical education teacher for twenty-nine years. Was also a varsity football coach and boys varsity bowling coach. Our condolences go out to his family and to all who knew Jason at the middle school, um, including his students, fellow teachers and administrators. Um, certainly a loss for the community. With that, I would ask everybody to please rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands. Let me ask our town clerk to please call a roll.
Supervisor Copa. Deputy Supervisor Laban. Councilmember Berger.
Here.
Councilmember Zucala.
Here.
And Councilmember Marinucci.
Present.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from Thursday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. A motion to adopt those as they appeared in the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the approval of minutes from Tuesday, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. A motion to adopt those as they appeared in the agenda as well.
Second.
All in fa- all in favor?
Aye.
We did have a proclamation prior to the board meeting. Um, we gave a proclamation recognizing, um, the Embred, um, Production Company. I'm going to let, um, Count Deputy Supervisor Laban just, uh, add a, um, um, add a comment about that to the record.
Yeah, so we recognize the Embred Production Company. That was a, uh, ground up production from the students. They delivered, orchestrated and composed that entire thing. And it was definitely worth being recognized tonight.
Okay, thank you for that. The next item on the agenda, um, is a recognition of the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Amherst Senior Sen- Se- the Amherst Center for Senior Services at J.J. Audubon. Uh, that took place last week. Uh, we thank all the hard work and dedication of, um, of boards and of, um, residents and, uh, volunteers and of our staff, uh, both present and past, uh, who put in countless hours to make the senior center or the, the Amherst Center for Senior Services what it is today. Um, it's a, it's certainly a, a beacon, um, in times of need. Um, it fulfills, uh, daily enrichment, uh, education and social, uh, opportunities for our residents, um, most days and, and, um, it's always and will continue to be, um, I think, one of the, the best attended and most, um, popular and most populous in terms of, uh, membership, uh, centers in Western New York. Uh, we are looking forward to, uh, next year adding another, um, satellite center to the, to the mix, uh, and supportive kitchen, uh, so that we can continue to grow, uh, robust senior offerings and continue to bring, uh, services, uh, to people throughout the town. Uh, but thank you again, uh, to the staff there, Melissa Abel, um, Mary Diana, who, who lead a wonderful team of people. Um, so again, congratulations, uh, to them for that. And.
I have announce, an announcement. The Amherst Youth and Community Coalition has a special screening of Can't Look Away, which is a documentary against, about the case against social media. It's recommended for adults and teens. It's free, but you need to register. It's this Sunday at eleven o'clock at, at eleven thirty, sorry, at eleven thirty at the North Park Theater. I do have one posted on that door that has the QR code to, um, register. And I do have one other, but that's all I have with me at the moment.
All right, the next item on our agenda, there are two, uh, public hearings this evening. Resolution eight fifty on the Capital Improvement Program or CIP for twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty-one, um, uh, uh, schedule a calendar years, plural, um, and Resolution eight fifty-one, which is the Town of Amherst, uh, twenty-twenty-six budget. Um, that's a supervisor's budget, uh, that I've, um, am gonna present. I'm going to motion to open first Resolution eight fifty, the pu- the public hearing on the CIP program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And at the same time, because I do the presentation together, I'm going to motion to open Resolution eight fifty-one, the Town of Amherst twenty-twenty-six budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, um, budget, uh, the budget's been, uh, published and, and available for consumption. Um, this year's budget, I'm doing the budget first, then CIP in that order. This year's budget, um, basically, uh, is, it includes a, um, a tax levy increase, um, with, uh, staying under the tax cap. Um, while the tax levy's gone up, um, there, you'll see in a couple of slides, uh, there is, uh, savings, a small, very fractional savings, um, to the average household, to town residents. Um, the reason why we were able to accomplish that is because we've had, uh, good growth again this year, um, in property value, uh, that is, um, is related to a lot of the economic development projects and redevelopment that we've had going on here. Um, a look at the expenditures by fund include, um, a ninety-five million dollar general fund. Um, you can see it's our largest fund. Um, the smallest fund is, um, our central alarm fund. Uh, we provide, uh, central alarm services, uh, not only for Amherst, but for Clarence, um, Newstead and Akron, uh, as well. Um, so I, the rate change or what average household will see is a, is a meager thirty-two cent savings or a point zero two percent decrease. Um, so it's essentially a flat, uh, mean family, mean median home. Um, and that change, uh, is, again, is related to, um, what we've been able to accomplish uh, in terms of, uh, growing our services and, uh, seeing town, uh, develop and continue to redevelop. Um, the overall, um, uh, this is a, a look at, um, the allocated budgets. Uh, so you see townwide village share and town share. Um, so there is, uh, a portion of the town, uh, which pays a, a different, um, that we don't have the B fund. There is, there's a couple of other things that the village share doesn't, isn't included. Um, there is, uh, just kind of a look at, uh, the change in assessed value. Um, again, so it's a, it's about an eighty-three billion dollar, um, change in assessed value or growth this year. Uh, that's, uh, that's indicative, um, as Moody's told us of a town that continues to, um, excel in terms of, uh, redevelopment strategy. Um, this is, uh, the, the sort of a estimated fund balance percentage of the twenty-twenty-six budget. Uh, we continue to maintain a ten point seven percent fund balance. We're staying, um, over our, uh, self-created, uh, ten percent, um, fund balance minimum or fund balance threshold. Um, the growth, uh, so just to kind of break down our budget, um, personnel services, which is our, our employee salaries, uh, you know, sees a three billion dollar increase or a four point nine percent, uh, change. That is about thirty-six point four nine percent of our overall budget. Um, benefits, which includes, uh, retirement and healthcare, um, that saw a five million dollar increase. Uh, healthcare continues to, to, um, perplex a lot of communities, but that accounted for a thirteen point seven five percent in change, increase. Um, and it's a, it's makes up twenty-five percent of our budget. So, you know, roughly, um, sixty percent of our budget is situated between, um, personnel, services and benefits. So it's tied up in, in staff and people and an investment in people and investment in people that provide services. Um, our fixed assets, um, is one point two five percent. Um, our contractuals, uh, down eight point six percent makes up about seventeen point four two percent. And our debt is up point two nine percent. Um, and it's about a thirteen percent of our, of our annual budget. Uh, the reason why that's such a low increase is, um, because, or percent change is, is frankly, we, we retire debt while we're adding debt, right? It's not just adding debt. We are constantly retiring debt as well. Um, you can see, so, uh, at the end of the day, um, we're, we're looking at a two point four eight percent, uh, change in terms of expense. Um, that's offset by some revenue growth and the revenue growth, um, really comes from, um, um, some increased revenue that, uh, we're seeing, um, the building department continues to see increase in permit fees associated with a lot of projects and a lot of large projects. Uh, we continue to see an increase, uh, in, in our sales tax distribution. Uh, but also, um, in, in this year, uh, our mortgage tax, which has been down, um, is already bouncing back in twenty-five. We expect, um, some growth there, um, although we're not, you know, nothing, nothing massive. So really, the building department revenue increase, um, is the, is the largest offset. Uh, so again, uh, the overall impact of that levy change is, uh, negative point zero two percent on an average household. Um, uh, before I get into CIP and the borrowing, I just want to remind everybody that tonight is the first of three public hearings on the budget. Um, it's the fourteenth here at Town Hall. Then we're at the Senior Center for a Public Hearing, um, on, uh, ten twenty-four at ten AM. So that's a good time if you can't get to the Town Hall at night. Um, and it's another opportunity for people to interact with the town on this. Uh, again, on the twenty-seventh here at Town Hall at our next town board meeting. And you can mail, um, to the Town of Amherst Attention Town Board, uh, here at fifty-five eighty-three Main Street, Williamsville, New York, New York, one four two two one. Or you can email budget comments at amherst dot N Y dot U S. Um, those comments sent there will be, um, will be added to the public hearing record. Um, and, uh, finally, uh, budget comments can also be, um, are also available to you at H T T P S, um, colon backslash backslash W W W dot amherst dot N Y dot U S, backslash budget comments. Um, so, uh, we started this last year, uh, and I asked Linda to work with me on preparation of, uh, debt overview presentation. Um, I think it was helpful last year. We had our bond counsel from Harris Beach, uh, participate in last year's creation. Um, but I'm gonna go through how bands and bonds work, uh, because I know that there's been some conversation about those in the past. So I'm gonna start with bond anticipation notes or bands. They are short-term financing typically for one year. A project can be kept in a ban or rolled over for a maximum of five years with financing required each year. Typically, we roll those over, um, when we are either not completed with a project or it's more favorable terms to keep them in a ban. Um, once they become eligible for a bond though, typically our bond financing is much less than banned. So bonds are long-term financing typically between ten and forty. A maximum term of fi- of the financing is determined by the period of probable usefulness. Um, so it's usually referred to as a life cycle or a project's longevity. Um, once the project is rolled into a bond, the principal and interest payments are set for the term of the bond. So there's no balloon payments. They don't oscillate up and down. Um, they are, they are set across the entire period of the bond. Bonds can be refinanced under certain circumstances should interest rates decline. Um, certainly as we watch interest rates decline, we're always looking to see, um, and we have financial advisors who look to see when we should be thinking about refinancing, um, some of our old debt. Uh, the maximum period, time period for municipality can finance an object or a purpose through debt is known as the period of probable usefulness or PPU, which is determined by New York State Financial, uh, Local Finance Law. Town establishes capital program or CIP each year in conjunction with budget process. Um, we've used a CIP successfully, um, since before me. Um, and it's a, it's a good process. I think we have a pretty robust CIP program. When a department is ready to move forward with an approved project or a capital project, a map plan and report or MPR is submitted to the finance department for review and then to the legal department for processing. The legal department coordinates with bond counsel, in our case Harris Beach P L L C, who provides a bond resolution for placement on the town board agenda. So again, that's handled specifically by bond counsel attorney, by bond counsel, so our bond attorneys. Once the several, once one of several processes may be followed depending on the project. Projects with a PPU of five years or less become effective immediately upon approval of the bond resolution by the town board. Projects within a special district require a public hearing and become effective after the public hearing has been closed and upon approval of the bond resolution by the town board. Projects with a PPU of over five years not in a special district become effective after a thirty-day permissive referendum period, which begins the day of a town board approval of the bond resolution. All bond res- authorizations must be approved by a super majority or two-thirds of the board's voting strength or four b- board members in the case of Amherst Town Board. The borrowing process, the town is typically issues debt annually in a single borrowing in the fall. If there are any larger projects or larger projects which require early financing, a ban may be issued earlier in the year and then rolled into the regular fall borrowing. The comptroller's office, um, works with the town's municipal advisor, in our case Capital Markets Advisors LLC and the town's bond counsel on finalizing the town's official statement, which outlines the borrowing. A credit rating for issuance is obtained from Moody's Investor Services Incorporated. Our bond rating is staying the same as it's been throughout my tenure. Um, the town's twenty-twenty-four bond rating was double A three. We're expecting it to remain, um, steady at double A three. The borrowing is put out to market by municipal, uh, by the municipal advisor. The town closes on the borrowing typically in November. Projects with a five-year PPU are typically kept in short-term financing or bands for the life of the borrowing. Projects with longer PPUs are initially issued for short-term debt bands and then rolled into longer-term debt or bonds. Typically held in bands for two years and then rolled into bonds. The, they may be held in bands for shorter or longer periods of time depending on what the project, what the proj- what is projected for interest rates. Infrastructure projects such as road, water, sewer may be bonded in one year. The town has power to contract or to, to contract indebtedness for any town purpose. The principal amount of the town debt cannot exceed seven percent of the most recent five-year average full valuation of taxable real estate in the town. This is subject to certain exclusions and deductions such as water and certain sewer facilities. The town's constitutional debt limit as of twelve thirty-one twenty-four was seventeen point one eight percent. A total debt less exclusions of one hundred and seventy-six million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars with a debt limitation of one billion, twenty-nine million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The estimated constitutional debt limit at twelve thirty-one twenty-five is sixteen point six two percent. A total debt less exclusions of one hundred eighty-six million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five with a debt limitation of one billion, one hundred and nineteen million, nine hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and twenty. The CIP program for the years twenty-six to thirty-one, um, has been, uh, uh, presented by myself to the board. The CIP identifies and prioritize and made public that prioritizes large capital projects their cost and funding sources. It follows the town's debt management policies, implements the comprehensive plan and public facilities plans, generally involves physical improvements with project costs in excess of a hundred thousand, generally. It involves new facilities or major repairs. It's not intended to fund routine maintenance. The town board is sole authority for adoption and amendments. Um, we do have a CIP review committee. Uh, it's the supervisor's committee chair, planning board, chair, comptroller, director of finance, town attorney, town engineer, uh, engineering department designee, um, planning director, director of economic development and the planning department's staff to assist in project and organization. CIP review committee discusses in progress on, in the status of previously approved twenty-twenty-five CIP process, projects. In some cases, a project gets funded and not started. Some cases it gets pulled. Departments submit a new project request for a program period twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty-one. Committee reviews and evaluates new project requests over several meetings and formulates recommended CIP. The supervisor then submits recommended CIP to the town board with the budget. The town board reviews recommended CIP during the public hearing. The town board adopts the CIP with the town's operating budget. Six-year program for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty-one includes sixty-three projects with a total bonding value of approximately eighty-seven million. Amounts proposed to be funded in twenty-twenty-six include twenty-two million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in long-term bonding, um, zero in current funding, um, thirteen million, seven hundred and sixty thousand from other sources, mostly federal, um, and state, uh, funds and grants. Um, but in some cases, uh, private sector contributions in the form of community benefit agreements on projects. Um, that project, um, those, those bonds and funding sources at that level en- enable us to, to perform thirty-six million dollar, five hundred thousand dollars worth of work. Um, we're very grateful to all the federal and state representatives, um, as well as to the IDA and the private sector investors, um, who create such a large offset. Um, of our bonded projects, the majority of them are in the water pollution control facility, uh, six million, one hundred and fifty thousand. Um, that facility, um, it's, it's gonna come up in a few minutes, has the, carries the largest project that we have scheduled for this year. Um, paving, transportation and vehicles, um, in the amount of four million. Uh, recreation and parks, a little over four million. Water lines at two point eight million, sanitary sewer system at one point six, storm drainage at one point six and other things, um, some facilities, some studies, um, et cetera, at, uh, two point four. Um, you get a look at, uh, where the, those, um, components have been in the past. Um, you can see that the, there's been a run-up, um, in the WPCF to a very large project in twenty-twenty-five and then twenty-six. We did hold a public hearing on that project in twenty-five. Um, I'm going to ask Jeff Burrows in a minute to come up to our town engineer just to re-explain that project as it, it is the majority of the borrowing for this, planned borrowing for this year. Um, the sanitary sewers, uh, you can see, uh, kind of where we are, storm drainage, uh, paving, transportation and water systems. Um, so with that, Jeff, if you would come up. Our largest project for the year, uh, was subject to a public hearing held a year ago. It's the second part of two, um, for the WPCF oxygen, um, separation system replacement. Um, I was looking at the presentation and asked Jeff if he would, uh, speak more eloquently on the topic than I could. Um, and with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Jeff.
Good evening, uh, supervisor members of the board. Uh, just a quick mini wastewater lesson. Um, the, the town's treatment plant employs an aerobic process to break down pollu- the pollutants in the sewage. Um, the air for the aerobic system, oxygen is provided by a cryogenic plant. That plant pr- currently produces oxygen at a ninety-five percent purity rather than using atmospheric oxygen, which is only twenty-two percent, um, by volume. So the, the cryo-plant is original to the treatment plant, which means it was put online somewhere in the late seventies, early eighties. Um, and although the plant has had minor improvements, it has obsolete components and is costing more than it should in electricity and maintenance costs. And unfortunately, every month or so, there's another emergency that we have to jump to to keep the thing running. So the replacement system, which we're considering, is a VPSA. It, it still generates pure oxygen. It just does it differently. It uses a, a sieve separation rather than the boiling point of the, of the gases in, in air to separate, um, is in the cryo-plant. The improvement is in two processes. The first is that we have a consultant who has put together procurement documents to actually procure, to buy the, bid and buy the equipment because the equipment has a lead time of somewhere between twelve and thirteen months. Um, that, those documents are in the, in the DEC's hand for approval and the Environmental Facilities Corporation, which we are hoping we are going to get a grant from them for this project. So they have a state, a seat at the table as well. And then the second component of it is actually for the design for the site improvements that have to occur to house the, these new units at the facility and the piping and the controls and the electrical hookups and all that. That design effort is just kicking off here, but it is, it's, 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 uh, pretty well-defined. Um, so at this point, the town has applied for an Environmental Facilities Corporation W I I A grant that was applied for on September twelfth was the application deadline. We anticipate that to be somewhere around three million dollars of a, of a ten to twelve million dollar project. Um, and the reason that we're hedging on the numbers is because that we anticipate that we're going to be able to value engineer some of the components out of the project with a different, um, manufacturer of the equipment. Um, so subject to that, I will take questions and, um, okay, sorry. Sure, thank you.
All right, um, so that is, uh, the largest project that we have scheduled in terms of, um, in terms of capital expenses here to give what's scheduled last year for twenty-six, right? Other projects, uh, no, um, include the North Forest Pool of Park renovations, uh, for, um, it's a little bit of a kind of garden secret sometimes, but people think of, uh, Amherst, they think of Clearfield Pool. We actually have two, uh, but the, the second which is at North Forest. Uh, if you haven't been there, so it's wonderful. The pool hasn't, um, been touched in a little time, uh, the building and the pool, uh, it's upgraded. Uh, we have a grant, uh, thanks to, uh, Senator Sean Ryan, uh, for installing Splash Pad. And we have a, uh, another grant thanks to the generosity of the Jolly Boys for Playground, um, at the application. The park's gonna get overhauled. Uh, with that, uh, we intend to, uh, modify the building and increase the, or potentially increase the attendance, uh, and, uh, also, uh, start some renovation process there. Uh, and then the second one, uh, we won for, uh, your, this is your, uh, Playground Pyramid, uh, the park because the rules surrounding, uh, sole source contracts and the state kind of, uh, stop utilizing state contracts. So sole source contracts for playgrounds has been.
Oh, sorry, my microphone's off. I apologize. Um, so again, just for the record, uh, North Forest Park Pool renovations. Um, and the second thing, we did miss one year of, um, of playground investment, um, in part because of the sole source contracts and the way that we can purchase those materials and installation has changed. Um, we do have a number of playgrounds, uh, to get after this year. Um, we did receive a grant for Clearfield, um, to replace that playground thanks to Assemblywoman McMahon. Um, we do have plans, um, at places like Briarhurst, uh, Creekwood, uh, and places like, um, and the, uh, the Northwest Community Center. Um, so, uh, we are, uh, returning to investing in those, um, after a year hiatus. Um, and I think that completes- And I think that completes my budget and CIP overview for the public hearing. I'm going to ask my board for comments or questions first, if they have any, including anything you may want to ask Jeff about cryogenics.
Hey, unfortunately, I've had it explained to me in great detail many times. I couldn't explain it to anyone else, but I understand it when Jeff explains it.
Anyways, okay, with that, I'm sure that there's some comments or questions from the audience. I'm going to invite speakers to come up. I'm going to ask you to state your name and address for record. So please feel free to come up with questions or comments on the budget and CIP.
Good evening Supervisor Colpa, Deputy Supervisor Lavin, Councilwomen Maranucci and Berger, and Councilman Zucala. My name is Andrea Morganti and I reside in Getzville. I am a member of the Amherst Concerned Citizens Group and also an Amherst taxpayer. I'm here to address the 2026 budget. And we'd like you to know that we have done a careful review of the two-hundred, the budget, two-hundred pages, line by line. And we have several pertinent questions this evening. I was just curious if you have all reviewed the two-hundred-page document? Good. Here's my questions. Under General Fund Account A000102401, the actual interest revenue for 2025 was four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, while the budgeted amount was two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-two. The 2026 budget projects less, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven, four-hundred-and-fourteen. So why is the interest revenue being projected lower despite higher actuals in 2025? Now, is this due to anticipated changes in cash balances, investment strategy, or interest rates? My second question. During the recent Town Board meeting, Councilwoman Maranucci asked whether there would be any staffing increases in the Facilities Department. Bob McCarthy responded that there would not be. However, a new carpenter position has since been posted for the department. Additionally, if staff and associated expenses were transferred from the Building Department to Facilities, the total amount move should be two-million, forty-eight, twenty and eighteen cents. Now, can you confirm whether this is the correct amount that was reduced from the Building Department's budget and explain the rationale behind the staffing changes in light of prior statements? Thank you.
Okay, so first, why less interest revenue? Interest rates are planned to drop. When interest rates drops, our investment interest also drops. The Fed has projected interest rate, the first quarter percent interest rates already happened. They're projecting more interest rate drops by the end of this year. And in, and more interest rates drops in the first, second quarter of next year. So that's based on outcomes that we take into account with our financial planners. The second is with regards to the Facilities Department. The Facilities Department has, has new employees. They are skilled trades employees. In the past, the town had a, the ability to build. We had carpentry shops years ago under administration by Supervisor twice prior to me in that board. A lot of those department positions got cut. The town favored outsourcing, outsourcing repairs and outsourcing capital projects. This department is going to be partially funded out of capital. In other words, they will be actually doing the physical changes that we are authorizing spending in our capital project on and taking over maintenance roles that we would otherwise hire contractors at close to a twenty-five percent profit margin for. Thank you.
I appreciate the response.
Good. Good evening Supervisor Colpa. Sure. Deputy Lavin and board members. I'm Grace Connor. I live in Amherst, New York. And of course, I'm a taxpayer also and ACC member.
Ms. Connor, if you could lower that a little so everybody in the crowd can hear you as well. Thank you.
Is this better?
That's better.
Okay. There appears to be a discrepancy in the budget documentation regarding account codes. In one section, the Building Department is listed under A1620 and B3620. However, in the Personnel Section, A1620 is identified as the Facilities Department. Can you clarify which account codes correctly correspond to the Building Department and the Facilities Department? This clarification is essential for accurate tracking of departmental expenses and staffing. Thank you for your time.
No problem. So the, the A1620 facility, that is the Facility Department. Building Department exists in the B Fund. The reason for the differentiation is our A Fund is inclusive of village residents or village properties. The B Fund is not. Village has its own building department. They do in turn contract with Amherst to supply a lot of their building department. They do have their own fire inspector. But because the two are taxed separately because the town doesn't technically have jurisdiction over the village's code enforcement arm. So they're separated, which is why the A Fund, prior to us creating a Facilities Department by name, that department existed already on paper inside of the, as a subset of the Building Department. So it's kind of a legacy accounting line. Moving forward, it will be the Facilities Department. Thank you.
Good evening Town Board Members. My name is Jerry DeCosmo from Meyer Road. I'd like to address what seems to be a serious reduction in the Police Department budget that warrants clarification. For the last four years, Police Office Passenger Budget Line, A3120-2200, has been budgeted around four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. This year, the budget amount is zero. It appears the 2026 budget removes funding for police vehicle purchases. Can you confirm this is due to the scheduled delivery of new vehicles at the end of 2025, making 2026 purchases unnecessary? If so, does this mean the 2027 budget will need to include approximately five-hundred-thousand dollars for fleet replacement? Thank you.
Oh, that, is that your, all your questions? Okay. Yeah, so the reduction in police vehicles. So a couple of years ago, when we saw very high interest rates and interest rates skyrocketing, we moved our purchase of police vehicles. And it was, it was part of the larger tax increase that year. We moved police vehicles over to the budget. So when we moved them to the budget, we did that and we had to cut other items out of the budget to make way for the vehicles. When we looked at how we are going to address that, that inflation rate or that interest rate, now with interest rates dropping, it's more advantageous for us to shift it back to borrowing. And this happened prior, back and forth a long time. So for the past, past eight years with me, it's shifted back and forth. Prior years to me, it shifted back and forth. Sometimes it's partially in both, sometimes it's on the other, sometimes it's on another front. So two years of high interest rates, we kept it in the budget. And the, and this year, we're doing it in projected borrowing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Bill Blake, Farrell Lawn Drive. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask you what the total debt was, looks like in 2025? One-eighty-six?
Are you, yeah, when you're done with your questions, I'll address it.
Okay. I just, I didn't see that when you did it. I've been up here several times, as have others, speaking about the project at thirteen-fifty Egbert Road, the Eggersville Youth Center. I did, I looked through the budget. I did not see anything in the budget to pay for that. The twenty-eight-thousand-dollar-a-month lease charge plus whatever it's costing to facilitate or bring it up to speed. So is that in there? And I'm just not looking at the right location. And if it is in there, this will be the third time I've come up and asked the board to review the former Western New York Catholic Charities Building in the parking lot of St. Ben's. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to save potentially a hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars a year on the lease alone. It's all equipped, ready to go. And as of this afternoon at two-thirty, no one has heard anything from the board as far as just looking at that, so. Those are my questions.
Okay, thanks. So total debt is, as I said earlier, one-eighty-six, one-thirty-two, two-thirty-five, with a debt limitation of one-billion, one-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, nine-oh-seven, two-twenty. So it's an estimated constitutional debt limit at sixteen-point-six-two percent. Or rather, our debt is sixteen-point-six-two percent of our constitutional debt limit. That, again, so the, the large, the, the larger amount, right? That's the debt limitation. That's the number that we can spend to. The number that we are currently at is at one-eighty-six, one-thirty-two. The Eggersville Youth Center building is, we, we don't pay a lease until we actually are operating the building itself. And we don't have an assigned staff to that building. But that's a year and a half or so away. So there is not a funding line for it. The, and regarding the Catholic Charity Building, just because there haven't been any calls made doesn't mean that we haven't looked into it, right? We're not ready to engage a real estate agent. Fact of the matter is, we are under a contract with Eloquent Development. So we have to be sensitive to that. Nevertheless, we are, as a town, curious as to what's going to happen with that Catholic Charity Building. So it is something that my office has spent some time on, reviewing what the building is, the year of the building, the, the sort of dates of the building. I do appreciate the inside photographs of that space and, you know, relative proximity to the St. Ben's Playground. But it would take a, it was a little ways to go before we could project what the future of that space is. But nevertheless, we have actually paid attention to it. So thank you for bringing those photographs and providing the name of, of the real estate or the listing agent or the representative to us. Can't remember his name offhand, but I do remember that the phone number started with a five-eight-five area code. So we'll see where it goes. Okay, more questions or thoughts, curiosities? Please come forward.
Matt Plunkett, North Hill Drive. In listening to the presentation, the levy's going up again. I mean, it's nice to know assessed, more assessed properties online, come online to help offset the, some of the cost of paying for that higher levy and everything. But people need to not be misled when the talk turns to assessed value of this and assessed value of that. If the levy is going up, the town's spending more money. And they spend way too much now as it is. And with respect to the, the capital budget, it's nice to know that you're going to be doing some work at North Forest Pool in a Clearfield. I have a thought. Why don't you try to keep both pools open on Sunday and the, and the, all weekend in the summer instead of having one closed every weekend? You know, I had, my grandson was in town visiting me this past summer and he's always enjoyed going to the Clearfield Splashpad. And we, I was going to take him over there this summer before he headed back home. And I looked online and found out that Clearfield was closed on Sundays and that was my last chance to take him. Fortunately, the town of Tonawanda Splashpad was open, so I was able to take him over to Paddock Park and use their pool, or their splashpad. But it sure would be nice if both of our pools could be open both Saturday and Sunday in the summer. We're spending millions and millions of dollars here and we can't afford to keep a pool open on the weekend in the summer. And that's craziness.
Thank you. I think some of that is due to staff shortages, but certainly I would like to see the pools open on Sundays as well. We are also adding multiple splashpads. Did one at Royal Park. Are looking to do one at this location because we recognize that as our summers get warmer in intensity, that there's a bigger demand for cooling and water play. So that is something, but thank, thank you for that comment. And I do agree, Sundays would be, would be very important. Anything further? Seeing none, I'm going to motion to suspend the public hearing until the next public hearing date, which is October twenty-fourth. Senior Senator at ten AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda tonight is, is Resolution 702. It's an adoption of local law to amend the zoning map at twenty-five-seventy-seven Millersport Highway, C2025-02. And a motion to adjourn that to our next Town Board meeting of October twenty-seventh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reason for the adjournment is we promised conversations with the, between the developer and the residents. That has yet to happen. We're making good on our promise. Okay, the next item then is public expression. I'm open, open, motion to open public expression at this time.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, I do have a sheet up here. I'm sure there's a second. First, Andrea Morganti. Nope. Okay, Grace Connor. Jerry DeCosmo. Bill Blake. Same. Okay. Joel Voitovich.
Joel Voitovich, excuse me, thirty-five Besirius Drive. When the Royal Park, Royal Park project started, it was to be financed in part by a state grant given to Damon College for two-point-four million. However, the details of the grant don't line up with the reality of the finances. The grant is a three-to-one matching grant, which requires Damon to contribute seventy-five percent of the project. The rules also require Damon to have full control of the money. They did not. The matching grant portion was paid for directly by Amherst. Now comes the squeeze point. To be compliant with the grant contract, Amherst would have needed to donate the money directly to Damon to be deposited into their bank account. Damon was to then supply this information as per the contract. The conflict then is that the state constitution prohibits towns from donating money to any public or private corporation. The contract should have been tossed at that point, but it wasn't. During the construction, Damon was required by the grant contract again to pay the contractors directly and to maintain detailed records of the payments, which they were to submit for reimbursement of the grant. Again, they did not. The Town Controller paid the contractors directly. How and why the disbursement came about is anyone's guess at this point. How does this process get sidestepped? The agency in charge of the grants, the HCAP Board, hasn't met since June 2024. They will meet again next Monday to review current and past grants. This is an opportunity for the residents to get some answers on how Damon- on how Damon subverted the rules to get possession of 2.4 million. And as the Damon President stated in his speech in April this year, Damon was able to get the soccer stadium built and it did not cost Damon one penny. There was a video on him making the statement and I've got it on a website. I will be sending the HECAP Board an email detailing this process and I encourage others to do the same thing, to show the board this problem needs their attention. I will be passing out cards showing where to go online to get this information. I hope we get answers we deserve on this and an explanation of how this was approved in the first place. Towns are not supposed to be in the business of aiding private corporations. A little side note on that. Somebody mentioned that the Egbertsville Youth Center, when it's built, Amherst is going to be paying $28,000 per month rental on that. And for the $10 million Royal Park improvement, Damon will be paying $1 a year rent. Thank you.
Darlene McClay. Okay. John Szlasny. John, I always pronounce your name wrong. I'm sorry. Every time I do it. Not a problem.
This is John Szlasny, 344 Teakwood. And I'm representing the Town of Amherst Recycling and Waste Committee. Reason I'm here tonight. Throughout the year, this year, our committee did a monthly collection for disposable batteries. And on the handout, I don't know if you can have that displayed, but the, we collected over 350 pounds worth of disposable batteries that are going to be recycled through Erie County Program. Very popular. And this is something that, as a climate smart community, this is one of those, one of those points that you can add to, add to the profile of the climate smart community portfolio. On the backside of it, it kind of explains why battery recycling is important. So that's just kind of a heads up. The second thing, town residents may or may not know that we do a composting program in the Town of Amherst. It's a drop, drop-up, drop-off program that has been very, very successful. One of the things that we've been doing the last several years is a pumpkin drop-off. Another very successful, successful thing. This will be our fourth, fourth drop-off. Every year, the numbers have doubled. This year, September, excuse me, on November 8th, from 10 to 1, there will be a drop-off site in concert with the village, behind, behind the village hall. And the, there will be a drop-off site at the Amherst Highway Department on North Forest. So please bring your pumpkins. We will, we will add them to the compost pile. And if you could just, if you could add a note to that on the town's website to, you know, to do, do the PR on that as well. Because it kind of, unfortunately, as a volunteer committee, we don't have any money to do the PR ourselves, so.
John, I have a question.
Shoot.
Where do you collect the batteries?
The batteries were collected at the, at the farmer's market for Saturday of the month at the farmer's market.
But while the farmers, I did, I was not aware of that. While the farmer's market is not open, are we collecting them anywhere?
Unfortunately not. I know, I know at one point before COVID, the Town Hall had, had a drop-off site briefly. But at this point here, there's nothing currently going on. I mean, it would be nice to have, to have something that would be on a more regular basis. But
Okay.
That's, you know, that's unfortunately, like I said, we don't have a budget. So I can't do that directly. And it, you know, the collections do cost a little bit of money, which is why it was nice to have Erie County help, help us out with, you know, with processing the collections.
Thank you.
Hey, John.
Mike.
If I may do one more, I also want to remind, I know you'd know this, but I'm not sure, or they do. You're still collecting, the group is still collecting compost at Amherst Farmer's Market meetings. And that's really a thankless but important job. And we appreciate the work that you guys do on that.
There's also drop-off at the Highway Department anytime it's open. Year round.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt Plunkett.
Matt Plunkett, North Hill Drive. On the battery issue, you've got a dropbox by the back door here for tax bills. And there's a dropbox out there to have the Boy Scouts take flags and destroy them. Why not a third dropbox for batteries? That doesn't sound like that difficult a problem to solve. I wanted to talk a little bit about an event that took place here over the last couple of weeks. Actually, I think it's still taking place, but not at this, this end of the state anymore. In honor of the 200th anniversary of the Erie Canal, of course, they built a replica of the boat that Governor Clinton rode the length of the canal on to open it back in 1825. I think it's called the Sennecat Chief. And it's run the length of the canal. I think it started on September 24th. It was a Wednesday, I know that. And it passed through town that day. And I don't think the town did anything to even take notice of that. And that was kind of sad. I know other municipalities along the state have had events to celebrate it. And it's sad, particularly in Western New York, because perhaps other than maybe the Albany area, Buffalo thrived and began to grow when the canal came to town. And that goes not just for Buffalo. Of course, Syracuse, Rochester, and any number of other cities across the center of the state began to grow dramatically as the canal came to town. But Buffalo benefited more than most because this was a transfer point from the canal to points west and from points west to the canal to take things east. So Buffalo got more growth out of it than most other cities along the length of the canal did. And I don't think Amherst did anything. My recollection is the day it passed through town, the Buffalo Niagara Historical Center out there was closed. And the thing passed right across the street from it on the canal, which is really too bad. There were a few people that went to Veterans Park to watch it go by, which was a wonderful place to see it happen. And actually, the Canal Carp did a research report a couple of years ago. I think it was on their plans to try and keep upgrading the canal path across the state. And they mentioned Amherst Veterans Park is one of the better, I think they called them nodes along the canal, that Amherst Veterans Park is one of the best ones in the state. And it was a spectacular place to watch it. You could go down there and be right at water level to watch him walk by. And it was a great place to get photos of it and things like that. It's just a pity the town didn't take advantage of that. I mean, we don't take advantage of celebrating the Fourth of July. We don't take advantage of doing any of that kind of stuff around here anymore, which is kind of a pity. And, you know, we get the budget presentation here tonight. And, you know, it, you know, kind of reminds me, I can't remember. I think it was Oscar Wilde, the British author and poet, defined a cynic as somebody who knew the price of everything and the value of nothing. And, you know, that's, you know, we know the price of everything here, but we know the value of nothing. That's why there was no celebration over the canal.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to motion to close public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, you have a consent agenda this evening. I'm going to ask our Town Clerk, please read that.
Town Attorney, 1234. Town Clerk, 12. Building, Building Maintenance, 12345. Controller, 12. Contract Compliance, 12345678. Human Resources, 1234567. Planning, 12. Police, 12. Sewer Plant, 161. Youth and Recreation, 12. Under Communications, 1 was Consent, 2 was Consent. 3 was Referred. Finance, Controller, and Economic Development. 4 Refer to Planning. 5 Refer to Planning. 6 Refer to Attorney. And 1 is Consent under Public Improvement Permits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'm going to motion Resolution 852, the OSCR camera for Amherst Fire Safety Division.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we do have one suspension item this evening. I'm going to motion to exit the agenda for the purposes of adopting one, one suspension item related to a piggyback contract extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you Supervisor. This is for the contract extension for the Corfu Machine Company. See authorized Supervisor to sign the contract to extend the piggyback for the Corfu Machine, Corfu Machine Company CRS 5364. An ISO move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion to return to regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I motion to open the second round of public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not motion to close public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?